You guys are on.
Awesome, thank you Chris. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Will you all please rise and join me in the pleasure allegiance?
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Nope. Alright, I don't believe we have any public comment. And no department update? In that case, I think we'll jump right into discussion and possible vote with the Salem Street Dam.
Sorry. So at the request of the board, we have invited our consultants from GZA Derrick Shipper and Adrian Dunk to provide an overview of the situation at the Salem Street Dam and provide some background information and next steps.
Awesome.
Great, thank you for having us here today. Am I able to share my screen? Am I authorized for that?
You should be.
And... Just one sec. Oh, sorry, wrong screen. How does that, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, thanks again. My name is Derrick Shipper. I'm Associate Principal and Dam Safety Engineer of the GZA Norwood Office. And with me tonight also is Adrian Dunk. Adrian's a wetlands scientist and permitting specialist here. She works out of the Springfield office. We've been working with Rebecca and Arthur for a few months now on the dam. We're here to discuss the condition of the dam and a couple of repairs that we believe should be made in an expedited manner. So Johnson Creek Dam, a quick overview. It is an intermediate sized dam. It is in poor condition. It is a significant hazard dam. As you know, it's a heavily traveled road and there are a number of subsurface and above ground utilities in the area across the dam. Couple of notable deficiencies is the outlet pipe.
Yes.
We don't have the...
I'm sorry?
We don't have these documents in our packet.
I believe we do. I believe it's one of the three attachments that was sent, is that correct?
No, the presentation is not included in the packet. So they're just giving an overview. I can get a copy of the information and you can review that after. If you have any additional questions, we can get those answered by the consultant.
Can we have this then as a listening meeting? And next meeting, we take a vote? Because we're just gonna get an audit, you know, auditory. We're not gonna have the information to look at while he's talking about it.
Let's see what they have here.
He's watching TV. Okay.
Alright, sorry about that, go ahead.
No, that's quite right. So there are a couple of noticeable, considerable deficiencies out here. One is the outlet pipe. It's a corrugated metal pipe. It is rusted along the bottom primarily and it's in tough shape. The bottom section has actually corroded out in some, especially down near the downstream end. And as you can see from these pictures, the pipe has actually settled out, leaving a void above the pipe. Here is, you know, it's about 11 inches that that pipe has settled out, leaving a void above it. The town, a few years back, had a geophysical survey performed. The top side of the screen, where hopefully you can see my cursor, that's the impoundment. And here's the downstream end. And what that geophysical study picked up was some voids around the pipe. Really no surprise. Another deficiency is that I believe is this downstream wall. It has a precarious lean to it. It's a tall wall with unknown geometry. And, you know, jumping ahead a little bit, we feel this is a wall that should be stabilized because if it were to fall, it would be a considerable issue here for the dam and utilities in the road. This is just above the outlet pipe. There were some voids that they were patched, that were filled and patched in July of 2003. So there has been soil loss above the pipe. And it is getting through probably that void that I showed you in a previous photo and going downstream, leaving voids in the road slash a dam. Here's an overview of the pond and the dam. To the bottom of the screen here is Johnson Creek. And here is the outlet pipe passing through to Johnson Creek on the downstream side. And this structure here you see is the spillway structure. And with some notable elevations that I'll highlight in the next slide. So as I said, the training wall here is at elevation 72.3. There is a fixed concrete crest shown in this red line here at elevation 65.66. And there are stop logs in place from the bottom of this fixed crest up. So the water level of the impoundment can be modified by placing more boards into the stop log grooves that you see here and here. So that's how the level of the pond is controlled, either raised or lowered. So this is just a cross-section through the dam with some elevations that I noted before. You know, the top of that training wall is 72.3. The fixed crest sill that I noted previously, the stop logs that can be installed. Your typical elevation of the pond is around 72.3. Of course, that can vary. Here is your outlet pipe going through the dam. And here's the downstream masonry wall. And a notice of unknown geometry. We don't know how thick it is. You know, if it has a batter to it like this, which would make it a stabler wall, we just don't know. So a couple of things that you could do here. You could line the pipe with what's called a cast-in-place pipe lining. What they do is they pull through like an oversized balloon through the pipe. And then they can, once they have it in place, they can expand it and it sucks itself to the interior of the existing pipe. Eventually, it cures in place and it's a structural pipe thereafter. Here's the before and after of a pipe. The image on the left, you can see the pipe in tough shape. And then on the bottom right is a pipe after lining, after the curing has been performed. And here's another photo. This is actually one of a corrugated metal pipe, similar to the one at Johnson Creek. So this is what the finished product would look like. You know, how can this be performed? The CMP lining needs to be performed in the dry. So, you know, a pretty simple solution here would be to remove all the stop logs, remove the stop logs down to the concrete sill, which gets you to roughly elevation 65.5, say. And then you put your stop logs back in place while you do your work over the course of a few days or so. So while this is all going on, water is not spilling. However, water would be allowed to rise and then eventually come back over the spillway. And then you could remove a couple of stop logs and resume, you know, put your impoundment back to the elevation you like it. So with this work in place, you could align your pipe. So the buttressing of the downstream walls and other repair we recommend being done in an expedited manner. So once your CMP is in place, you need to put an extension on it. And then I think the easiest thing to do would be to put a riprap buttress, you know, for lack of a better term, just a pile of rocks there to just stabilize the existing wall. That's what I have. Adrian, again, what is gonna go through the, what would need to be done here to permit this in an emergency situation?
Great, thanks Derrick. Yes, so we are proposing to permit this and we are moving ahead permitting this through an emergency certification. Because this is a dam, it's inherently in a water body. There are also rare species, so there's a lot of considerations. And even though it's an emergency certification, the town and we are following as many of the normal procedures as possible while working in an expedited manner. So we have begun work on the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act or the MESA Review Checklist. That's through the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. And that is due to rare species habitat in Johnson Pond, Upper Johnson Pond. We'll also need to coordinate with the Office of Dam Safety through a Chapter 253 Part A permit. We'll be requesting an emergency certification very close to when the work occurs, a day or two before the work occurs. We'll be preparing an after-the-fact Notice of Intent under the Wetlands Protection Act and an after-the-fact self-verification with the Army Corps under the Clean Water Act. So even though this is expedited, we are still adhering to environmental protections, being protective of the available resources. Next slide. So just to go into what these are, because it's, I live in a world of all acronyms and I wouldn't expect others to know what they all are. The Endangered Species Act has this MESA Review Checklist. We are required to get it for the temporary drawdown of the pond, which as Derrick said, we would draw it down, put the stop logs back and allow it to begin rising again while the work occurs. The drawdown would be expected to be days long. And so that application is currently underway. It typically requires 30 days of review, but Natural Heritage does expedite the reviews for emergencies. And then the Chapter 253 Part A permit, that's from the Office of Dam Safety. It is primarily an administrative process because it is considered, these would be considered a minor alteration of the dam structure for safety. And that application is also underway and we would expect a response from Office of Dam Safety, typically in many fewer than 30 days. Next slide. Great. The Wetlands Protection Act, that is what is administered by the Groveland Conservation Commission with support from the Mass DEP. And they can issue an emergency certification to protect public health and safety. As Derrick was describing, these repairs are really necessary to protect the dam structure. And that is keeping the dam intact, keeping the dam safe is protective of public health and safety because it reduces the risk of dam failure, which protects lives, protects downstream areas from flooding, and it protects interruption to utility services or potential pollution if those utilities were damaged and released materials into the stream. An emergency certification is sort of a unique process in the Wetlands Protection Act. It allows the town, in this case, the requister, to perform 30 days worth of work to kind of get in, take care of the emergency and get out. So the town would be requesting this. They would get all of the work done in 30 days. And after that, they would prepare all of the normal permitting, which is that Notice of Intent, following the typical administrative processes and documentation. And the Mass DEP can review this. They will have all of the records, they'll have it all on file, and they can be involved throughout that process. Next slide. So after the fact, I did mention we would be filing that Notice of Intent. And then the other component is the Self- verification Notification Form, the SVNF. That is administered by the US Army Corps Engineers and it's how the Clean Water Act is implemented. It's required for the sliplining work as well as the buttressing downstream. We are currently working on it, but that one does not need to be filed until... It can be filed during the work or up to 30 days after the work. So we're moving it forward, but we're prioritizing some of the permits that need to be filed prior to the start of work. So that is the permitting update and status. We are moving right along to meet as many of the normal processes as we can, but knowing that this is an abnormal situation so that we can handle this in as timely a process as possible.
And we'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Could you do me a favor and go back to the slide that shows the voids in the road?
Sure. The geophysical, this thing?
The, no, the thermal.
Mr. Chairman, can they send us that right now?
That's the picture right there that you didn't know what it was.
Well, yes, but can they just send us this thing right now? Why not?
It's a very large file. I can try.
I can send you the presentation that Arthur Marcos, the Projects and Programs Manager, did at the meeting that was included in your email that was sent to the board. And that photo is on that. So it has that and a couple of the photos that are also shared in Derrick's presentation. It's just not the exact presentation Derrick's giving right now.
Okay, but this is the presentation we're discussing right now. So that's why that would have been helpful.
Yeah, fortunately, it's on the screen, so I know that you said you didn't understand what you were looking at there.
Well, I can ask my questions when I'm ready. You can ask yours.
So I pulled it up so you could see what it was.
Okay, but...
I was being considerate.
Thank you.
But I'm not, I don't mind.
Okay, no, I thought you had a question on something, that's why you asked to go back.
How temporary is this fix? Or is this a permanent?
So we're also working with the Dams and Seawalls Grant, with the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs to do feasibility studies to see how feasible it would be to potentially remove this dam and other downstream dams. It's not being done, it's a feasibility study. So this dam would either have to be removed or repaired, those are options. So we're looking at both. And so these are viewed as like, you know, and to do either, to either repair it or to remove it, the process will probably be on the order of three to five years. So the thought is both these emergency repairs would hold everything for, say, three to five years.
Alright, that makes sense to me. Steve, you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. So I know we said that, or you said that sliplining the pipe would take a couple of days. What about the process to buttress that wall? Are we thinking, like, how long does that, do we anticipate that process taking?
My understanding is the town will likely self-perform that work. I gotta think they could do that in a couple of weeks, that'd be my guess, maybe faster.
Okay. And has there been any consideration to... Because I've been down there and kind of taken a look at it. I mean, has there been any consideration to whether that process could further compromise the dam while it's happening?
I don't think so, because they'll be actually working downstream of the dam. They're not gonna like take the, dump the loads from above or set a machine on top and place it down in. They come in the downstream, one of the abutment sides, probably the left abutment as you're looking downstream, and bring the material in from that way and operate the machine there and then place it up against the downstream side. So I don't see any risk to the structure by doing that work.
Okay. And then, just one last question. You mentioned that once we, or as we're doing that, we have to extend that pipe. So does that get done when we do the sliplining or when we actually buttress the wall?
Yes, let me go to my sketch. So you'll slipline the pipe and then you'll need to put an extension through. And then you can place the buttress up and around the extension.
Gotcha. And what material?
In that extension, oh, go ahead.
No, what material is the extension? Is it the same thing that we're using for sliplining or is it just another corrugated pipe?
It will not be the same material because recall, it's like a, it's a balloon. So it has to form to something, there'll be nothing there. You could put another five-foot diameter pipe there perhaps? Or maybe someone can get ahold of, say, a box covert or something. I guess whatever the town can get, that makes the most sense. Doesn't have to be fancy, it's to be able to pass water.
Okay, that's all I have.
How about you, Ed?
Just a couple. When completed, and if you have a good rainstorm, will it restrict the flow of water down there?
Will what restrict the flow?
Will the liner restrict much of the flow of water? Because sometimes you get a good rainstorm, spring when you get melting of snow, there's a good flow of water going down, going down the brook.
Yeah, so the lining is a very minimal, it's pretty thin. It's like an inch thick or so. So it really doesn't compromise the volume of the pipe all that much. It does a little, but very minimal.
Will it, when completed, will it completely empty the metal to a, just a small stream?
Well, let me see if I can go to where I wanna... So we're all, we can lower the impoundment to, sorry. We can only lower it to the top of that concrete sill, right? Without pumping. If we were to pump, we could get more, but we're not going to. We're gonna bring it down to the concrete sill and then put some stop logs back in place and then allow that blue triangle to rise up while the work is performed over the course of, you know, two to three days. So that's the lowest we can bring the impoundment to. If that answers your question, I hope.
Once the work is done, once these emergency repairs are done, the pond and the stream should work essentially the same as they do today, where it's a pond and it's managed by the stop logs and similar flows that you see today with higher flows in the spring and lower flows in the summer. Those should all remain the same. In the future, when there's either a dam removal or a large-scale rehabilitation of the dam, that would alter maybe the whole pond system, but repairs aren't going to really change the pond and the stream and how the water moves through the system. Besides for right when the work is happening. After the work's done, it should all be essentially unnoticedable.
Awesome, Kathy.
Yes, so I have a couple of questions. One is, the street above is collapsing. So that would mean that the street isn't draining right either. It's sending water down there as well. What will happen to the existing dam if we don't correct that? The stone wall dam, if you're still sending water into that stone wall and not through the pipe? Because that's what I've heard from a resident, that when it rains heavily, water just pours out brown from that wall.
Okay, yeah. Are you saying somewhere in here, there's water seeping right out of the face?
Yes, possibly, yes.
There is a drain pipe, if you can see my cursor.
Yep.
There is a drain pipe around here, so perhaps that is it? But if it's coming from somewhere else, that wouldn't shock me either.
Okay, and then...
But, yeah.
Go ahead, no, finish your statement, I'll hear it.
No, yeah, but it is, there is a drain pipe right here. And I'll note that this drain pipe is also displaced. But this catches surface drainage, there's a catch basin nearby and it comes out right here. In fact, you can see it's fairly wet in this photo.
Okay. So the, in the process, this has been going on for years. And in the process, the grounds that border this, they have some fairly significantly large trees that look dead. Is how, when you're trying to get the, well, I guess you're not going to do it, we're going to do it. When we're trying to get access down there to put a pile of stones, I would think it's not going to be that simple an endeavor from what I looked at.
Yeah, so can you see my cursor here?
Yeah, that tree, yeah.
Yeah.
On the other side.
So I expect that the work will come in this side. Yes, these maple trees here will need to be removed in order to, you know, stage material and have an excavator sit here and then place the berm right here. These trees on this side will be, need to come out.
Do we have an estimated cost for this whole repair?
No, we don't. I know that Arthur has a price from the contractor to do the liner. And the rest of the work is gonna be self-performed. Of course, the town will need to buy materials. I do not have the information, no.
It's about $200,000.
All told, yeah, everything?
Well, with contingency, yes. I would think $200,000 is the maximum.
Excluding engineering and design.
But this is the engineering and design?
The permitting that's required for us to move forward with the emergency repair requires GZA to fill out the application and provide updated plans and to meet the requirements of all of the different permitting agencies. So that is not inclusive of the $200,000. The $200,000 is for the time and materials of the Highway Department as well as the contractor to slipline the pipe. And that also includes police details and things of that nature.
Okay, and do we have an estimate on the engineering costs?
The engineering cost is about $45,000.
Okay. And we're doing this just to stabilize this for three to five years to decide whether or not we want to keep the dam or get rid of the dam?
Correct, but it could last longer if necessary. So if we decide that we want to take more time and decide what we want to do, if we want to remove the dam or to repair the dam, we're able to take that time because we have that stability within the repair that they'll be making.
Okay, and is there, in the research that you've done so far, is there any concern that as the trees start getting pulled down and the sleeve gets put in, that the road itself could collapse? Is there any probability or possibility of that? Just like to know upfront, if, you know, if there's a chance that we're gonna have something like that happen?
The lining of the pipe will not compromise the dam and neither will removal of those trees. And I think it'd be a good idea to like cut them flush to the ground and potentially grind them down to get the stumps out of the way, but that will not compromise the dam.
Okay, and at the current place where we are, is there any concern over the maximum weight that should be going over that area?
Yeah, that's a tough one to answer. As I said earlier on, we don't know the geometry of this wall. It could be three feet wide and 10 feet high. It could have a huge batter to it, we just don't know. You know, it could collapse under its own weight after a rainstorm or a freeze-thaw cycle and not necessarily by the weight of the car, vehicle going over it. It's really tough to, I'd say it's impossible to say if a weight restriction should be put on there.
So...
Because it's the subsurface, we just don't know.
So that you're talking about the actual stone wall that we're looking at now, right? You don't know the...
That's right.
You don't know how wide it is or how...
Yeah, let me see if I can go back. So I've drawn it as a vertical slender wall. It's probably not like that. It probably has some kind of batter to it like this, but we don't know for certain.
So this, the office, the people that are in charge of dams in the state, they don't have any drawings of this dam?
To our knowledge, there's no, uh, design as built drawings of the dam, no?
No records?
No, no records.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. I thought they had some records.
They have reports and such, uh, but I'm not aware of any design drawings and I, they likely don't exist.
We've not found any design drawings for this particular dam. We have inspection reports. Um, once it was classified as a significant hazard dam by DCR, we were required to do an emergency action plan. We had put that together, I think, back in 2018. And so since then, it's been an inspection every two, um, two times a year that we have an engineer come out. They walk the dam, they inspect the dam, they put together a report. That report gets submitted to, to DCR. Um, and that means that we've met the requirements while we try and look for a long-term repair um, or improvements to make to that particular area. But we don't have any design plans for the actual structure.
So I guess, and there's no, there's no, um, I'm gonna sound silly probably. I don't know technical terms for it. But you have no, um, tools or anything that could measure um, into there to tell us, because I would think when you go to bolster it, it would matter. Where the dam is the weakest and where it is the strongest. Right?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna put a fairly we're gonna put a fairly conservative, you know, buttress here, because like you say, we don't know. Um, this will be about five feet wide at the top here.
Okay.
And then we're gonna slope it down like a one-to-one. So we're, we're putting a fairly robust buttress in place here. Uh, that'll, that should hold, that'll hold it up.
And the, this buttress is made up of rocks, right?
Yeah, like a, like a angular riprop stone, riprap stone, if you know what that is, yeah.
No, I don't, but and what, what?
Yeah, no, it's all large bowl, all large boulders.
And so what makes them stay in place? Just because their size? Is it just the matter of their size?
Yeah, they're, 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 they're big, they're angular. You know, these aren't like marbles that can just cascade down. They're gonna be an angular boulder that'll, that'll, um, interlock with each other and it'll keep this geometry here that we show.
Well, well, what would be the approximate size of these interlocking boulders?
A typical boulder size?
Oh, they're only that big? Okay. Okay, and they, they interlock?
Uh,
Or is it a pile of rocks? I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. I'm, I just want to understand what's holding it together. That's all.
It's, it's probably something similar. You see a seawall, you ever see a seawall where there's stone there, they're not masoned, they're just?
Okay, so that's what we're talking about?
But not as big.
Yeah, like a jetty kinda, you know?
In the ocean, they're, they're probably, you know, as big as a table, but there, the smaller. They kind of work on the same, same, um, you know, uh, principle. Where you just kind of put them in place and lock them in place.
Okay, but I mean, have you done a calculation like of the approximate weight of this buttress wall? That what it should be able to um, hold? You know, what is the strength of it?
Yeah, we're, we're currently designing this, so we'll, we'll, you know, support it with a, with a calculation, yeah.
Okay, good. Um, I think that's, I mean, I know this is a situation we don't want to be in. Um, I just want to make sure I've understood it as completely as I can.
Why we're here.
Yep, yep. So basically the town of Groveland is gonna do the, all the removal of the trees, the putting in of this wall and all of that. Under your specifications, the drawing you have there.
Yep.
And you're going to do?
The town will do the pipe extension, riprep and associated work in accordance with the drawings and the permits, yeah.
Okay, and you're going to do all those permits?
That's right.
Okay. And does that mean you're doing the after the fact permits or just the emergency stuff?
Both. We're doing both the emergency and the after the fact permitting and documentation.
Okay. And will give us a window of 30 days to get the work done?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Jason, one more.
Yes, go ahead, Ed.
Uh, might, might have been answered before, but how long, uh, how long do these temporary repairs expect to last?
Uh, the pipe could last, the pipe repair could last many, many years. And, um, you know, the riprep, riprep buttress really kind of same. Um, there are, there are other deficiencies at the dam. Uh, you know, there's trees, there's other stuff that should be done, but these are um, the things that we feel, you know, what you can't have is this road collapsing. Either that CMP pipe, you know, gets a hole in it, it sinks and you lose your road and your utilities and everything. By the same token, this wall falling over would be a very bad thing and you lose your road and it'd be a big problem. So while there are other things to handle out there, these are, these are the emergency issues that we think should deal with.
All set.
All set. Now, is this all in process right now? Or is this something that we need to move forward?
So at the last meeting, it was requested to be on the agenda and to have GZA present, um, what it was, uh, what the organization was doing to assist us in this matter. So we are just waiting for them to finish their work. So they can continue to file with the appropriate agencies and we're also working with the consultant uh, or excuse me, the contractor for slip lining the pipe. And we're trying to figure out exactly when that would be most advantageous due to the weather. Um, with heavy rain, they won't work. So we're trying to make sure that when we file our emergency certification, we do so in a timely manner to get the work done. I believe we only have 30 days to complete the work and the emergency certification cannot be extended. So we've been advised to make sure that we've locked in our dates before contacting the conservation commission and going before them and asking and seeking that emergency certification. So we're just trying to get everything all organized and situated before we move forward, but we are moving forward and having those conversations.
And this is all in an attempt to keep that road open until we can make a decision whether or not that dam gets removed, when, when we get the funding to get the dam removed or repaired fully.
Correct, and that would include the watershed in its entirety as well.
So you don't need anything from us right now? It's more of a discussion. It's more of an information of what's they're doing and?
Correct.
Could I ask a clarification again? Um, you mentioned the conservation commission as the person, the body that has to vote the emergency.
Correct.
So how much preparation, uh, is still necessary to be done before they go? At what point date do they approximately think they're going to go before the conservation commission?
Um, I'm not sure if, Adrian, if you have an update in regards to where you are with some of the work that you're doing for permitting? And then maybe Arthur can speak to what his conversations have been with the contractor?
Yep, absolutely. We are, um, essentially ready within probably by the end of day tomorrow, we could submit the emergency request to the conservation commission. Provided that we, like you said, we know when the contractor is going to be, um, ready to do the work. We don't want to submit the request more than a day or two, um, ahead of the contractor being ready to do their work. Um, the conservation commission can approve an emergency certification outside of a public hearing. So we don't have to wait for, uh, that cycle. We can, they can approve it, um, anytime we make the request. And we've spoken with them a couple of times, so they are aware of the work. They are aware of the pending request. Um, we didn't want to blindside them.
And, um, on, on the towns, uh, and we have money approved that it's, uh, we had to get it specially approved under our chapter 90 funding because, uh, this, this impacted the road, so we had to take money away from that. We usually use the road improvements.
Yeah.
Um, so that's what money we usually, we had to get that approved. We got it approved by the, by the, um, DOT. And then we have a signed contract in place with, uh, contractor. And they have not given me a date yet, but it could be, they could, uh, I reached out last week, so they're still trying to get back to me on the exact uh, timing, but um, we spoke with them about a month ago and it's a six week process, so it's gonna start, um, the next little week, we should know. They have to, they have to order it and this material is, because it's a big, a lot of material, it has to be, uh, the order has to be placed and they have to, uh, deliver it, so.
Can I ask two follow-up questions?
Yes.
So it's a six week process from when we say go ahead?
Yeah, well, this is typical to see time on, on them ordering materials and stuff like that.
So if they were to get back to us tomorrow and say, yep, we're ready to go, and we were to say, okay, we get the sign off, we need to, wouldn't start for at least six weeks after that?
No, it wouldn't start whenever the weather is cooperating or, or whenever they think is a good time to start on their end with their contractor. With their, with their schedules too.
I guess I'm just trying to understand if we only have 30 days to?
No, no, we wouldn't actually begin that whole process till I have that, till we've decided on a big date.
Okay.
And start.
Okay.
And that would initiate us getting the emergency, um, without, getting the emergency order.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's what, we're trying to identify that date. Once we, they, they give us that date, it's 100% certain. Oh, whatever, you know, as certain as it can be, and then we'll go for the exact.
And then I guess the second part of that question is, given that the wall buttressing and that the town is gonna do that part, have we started getting quotes for materials and lining up times?
Yeah, we actually looked at removing the trees. We've got a quote for that. Um, I know, uh, Bill has looked into getting some other materials and figuring out what we're gonna use for a pipe. Um, to, for the extent, that extension in order and either where we can
Perfect.
Get some sort of old colvert pipe or maybe find something, uh, that someone might have that one I'm using or build one, um, there's some certain options.
Okay.
But yeah, so he's, we actually got a quote for removing the trees already. Some are dead, I think, and I think it would, I'm not gonna, I don't want to give the exact quote, but we have a quote for that.
Okay.
So we're starting that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just, uh, what Steve was bringing up, just to make sure I understand it clearly. The six week process is to get the materials that the contractor's getting the sleeve stuff, that stuff?
So?
I'm just, I'm trying to understand the six weeks and the 30 days.
Contract with them.
Yes.
And they say, okay, we signed it. From that day, we signed the contract. It's six weeks till they say we'll have the product ready to be installed. We've signed the contract a month ago.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that period now. And then what they're gonna do is they're gonna let us know when they're ready to, you know, all right, we want to say we want to start in this, this day. Then we'll know that day for certain and we'll, we'll get the emergency order. So that's what we're waiting for.
Okay, and so the conservation commission will declare emergency meeting or do their regular meeting?
Yeah, however they do it, but that's, that's only. Yeah, we would, we would file, we would have to do, we would have to rely on that, the date that they give us.
Okay, but I know it's always difficult. So you, you now, you think within two weeks maybe of getting that 30 days to do the work in?
Yes.
And you're kind of trying to be a weather genie and figure out, one, it's not gonna rain for a whole week in a row.
The, the weather and then their schedule themselves, like they have to obviously, they're, they're on the, they have crews all around the northeast doing similar work, so they have to get there. They've visited the site multiple times and they're, they're very aware of what it is, so they're, they're, they're eager to get started too, but, um, you know, just waiting.
So they're gonna do the sleeve thing?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna do the pipe extension?
The sleeve has to go first.
And then the buttress, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. It's just good to get clarity on it. So you don't need a vote from the board that says we're on board with this or anything? Wouldn't want us to change our mind, right?
Well.
I'd ask for a vote if I was you, but they, this is what I think.
Yeah, fortunately, it's already in the works and everything is, uh, everything is moving forward. And I really want to thank Arthur and Rebecca and our team on the Zoom for putting it together and explaining it to us.
Yes.
So that everybody here could understand it.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes.
As conservation commission?
Go ahead.
That's definitely.
From here or do I need to?
There's a mic there.
Um, Stephanie Bartelt, we talked at the CONCON meeting. I, I just, with the MESA checklist, I'm just wondering because we know we have river otters in that space. How you go about making sure wildlife like that are safe, I guess, because that, that's, I guess that's what I'm worried about with the MESA checklist, how that works?
Um, so the MESA checklist is for specific, um, species that have been identified as endangered, threatened, or species of special concern. Um, so those species receive special protection under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. Um, so there may be specific, um, we've already been asked by natural heritage, some questions about how quickly the drawdown may happen. Um, how long the drawdown would be occurring for, um, because they are wildlife biologists and they're thinking about what the species can tolerate in terms of, um, you know, can the species relocate? Can the species just move to where the water is or are they, um, you know, can they not relocate? Is it a certain time of year that this would disrupt, um, breeding? Or is it a time of year when they're, you know, feeding and, and just living their lives, but maybe not undergoing special, you know, reproducing or other, other special times of year? So, um, in terms of river otter, there are not special protections of river otter. They are highly mobile. So we would expect that they would move to where there is water at that time. There are large wetlands, um, so there's a lot of habitat around and given the limited time, um, this, this may stress them out, but it would not be incredibly disruptive to them. They would likely move to where this will still be operating as a stream. And then it will be refilling and then they can go back to their regular dens and, um, habitats within, within a week or two.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much for everything and all the hard work you guys have done. And I think now we're gonna go ahead and move on. And we're gonna do the presentation of our fiscal year audit.
Is this on? Does everybody have a copy of the financial statements? And there's two kind of stapled reports that go along with it. Just want to make sure everybody has a copy. I do have extras, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Just in case. Okay. So I just want to start off by thanking everybody here for having us here today, but not only that, but as your auditors as well. I'm Laura Stone. I was the director on the audit engagement. Just want to start off by kind of giving an overview of this past year for us. So last year when we were here, we were here as Powers and Sullivan. So your 2023 financial statements were issued under Powers and Sullivan. On February 1st of 2024, Powers and Sullivan merged with Markham. And then a couple of months later, on November 1st, 2024, Markham merged with C-Biz. So your 2024 financial statements are under C-Biz. So you guys kind of bypassed Markham altogether. But I just want to say it is the same audit team. Myself and Bill Donalds, who's the senior on the engagement, worked with Ellen, worked with Rebecca and Michelle to get, conduct the audit. Same, same team. I've been on your audit for a number of years now, so just wanted to let you know that it is the same audit team and that's, you know, projected to go forward that way as well, as we're C-Biz. And hopefully that's the end of mergers for us. Um, so we do appreciate your patience, um, as we go through that process, but we are on the other side of it and everything is, is good to go. So I just kind of wanted to start us off with that, um, that discussion in case anybody wasn't aware of the situation there. So as part of this presentation, I'm just gonna kind of go over your, the objectives of the audit, responsibilities, you know, our communications that are required to those charged with governance, which is you as the select board. And then I'm gonna kind of go over the timing, the overall audit process, just an overview of that. And then kind of dive into some results of the financial statements. Um, but if you have any questions, as, as I'm going through, please feel free to stop me. Happy to go into anything in further detail. Otherwise, I'll just kind of do a high level overview of what I feel are the significant elements of the financial statements. So the first thing I want to kind of go over is there's a letter. It's the, it's a, you know, stapled report, but it's a little bit longer than the shorter letter in there. And it starts with, you know, we have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities. So this letter here is our required communications to those charged with governance. Um, it's a clean letter. There's nothing in here that is significant or, um, noted any issues or anything like that. But I'll just kind of walk through it quickly to inform you guys of, of the situations and anything related to the results of the town. So the first section is our responsibility under US generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. Basically, we are here to, um, opine on your financial statements that they're materially stated and all, you know, in all material respects. Talks about kind of the different elements of the financial statements. It does indicate that we do not audit the municipal light department, so you do have a, a separate auditor for the municipal light department. That report is furnished to us, and we include that in your town, in the town's financial statements as part of the overall reporting entity, but that is audited by a separate audit firm. The next section of the, the letter here talks about, you know, timing, other elements of the audit. It does indicate, um, significant risk of material misstatement, that was noted as part of our audit planning. That's management override of controls, that is always a significant audit risk. There is nothing that can be done to overcome that as a significant risk, but it doesn't mean that we noted any, you know, override of controls, but we do have to notify that that is a, a significant risk as part of our audit plan. And there are things we do to, you know, test that. We do fraud inquiries with those around town, make sure that everybody doesn't have any fraud related concerns, and nothing was brought to our attention. We also look at journal entries, make sure that those are heavily controlled because manual journal entries are just significantly more risky, but we do a lot of testing to make sure that those are properly done, properly approved, and that they are normal entries that should be made to your financial statements. The next section talks about significant audit findings. There were none, there was no odd significant transactions or anything that came to our attention that, you know, we would have to put further scrutiny on, nothing, nothing like that. There's no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. There were no findings as part of our audit process. So that's just a testament to how good of a job, you know, Ellen, Rebecca, and Michelle do. Every time we come in, they have all the answers for us. The answers are turned around very quickly, so that means that the information is very, is organized well. Um, everything's ready for us when we come in to do our audit. There's no significant delays in terms of getting any information. So that's always good to hear, makes, makes the audit just go a lot smoother. The next element of this letter here, it talks about accounting estimates. So there are some significant estimates that go into your financial statements. The largest of them relate to capital assets and the useful lives associated with capital assets, as well as net pension liability and the net other post-employment benefit liability. There are significant assumptions that go into calculating those liabilities, so they are disclosed as significant estimates. Same thing with the financial statement disclosures that are particularly sensitive because of their nature and significant to the financial statements, net pension liability, net other post-employment benefit liability, you know, any changes of assumptions could have a significant impact to that liability and how it's measured. There are actually disclosures in the report talking about if the discount rate went up one percent or went down one percent, what that would do to the liability. So that kind of shows you how significant and how sensitive these measurements are. But there was no issue noted with them, that's very normal. Um, the next section, there's no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We're independent, there were no, um, uncorrected misstatements or any misstatements of any kind related to the books and records of the town, so there's nothing to disclose there. No such disagreements with management. There were no consultations with other auditors that we're aware of, except for obviously the, the light department's separate audit, and then, um, no other audit findings or issues. So there's nothing really to bring to your attention in terms of any concerns, um, from an audit perspective. So that's kind of, that's the letter, that's our required communications, um, kind of talks about all the elements. For our timing and overall, you know, audit work, uh, we have the audit conducted in pretty much two phases. So we have our preliminary audit fieldwork and our year end audit fieldwork. The preliminary audit fieldwork is typically done this time of year. Bill was here last week, um, doing some work for the 2025 audit. So we do our preliminary fieldwork prior to year end, because there's a lot of stuff that we can do ahead of time. We can do our risk assessments, our planning procedures, some transaction testing, information that's not year end specific. And then we come back out and we, in December timeframe, and we do our year end fieldwork. That's when we actually audit the balances of the financial statements. We look at revenues, expenditures, cash, fixed assets, debt, all the, all the significant elements of the financial statements. We do a significant amount of auditing procedures over those various elements to make sure that they are materially stated. Again, another very smooth audit, they do, you know, the team here does a great job of getting us the information that we need. And that's pretty much it for the over, overview of our process and the actual, you know, responsibilities of, of us as your auditor. And I'm just going to kind of go into the actual, the big report here, the financial statements. Um, and again, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. So the first couple pages is the audit opinion, starts on page one. That is a clean opinion. So it's called an unmodified opinion, that means that there were no adjustment, no, any modifications needed. So we were able to opine on all of the elements of the financial statements. Um, so there's no issues there, that's the, the best opinion you can get, that's what you're, you're aiming for. No proposed audit adjustments. Um, we do assist in converting the budgetary basis of accounting, which is what the books and records are kept at, and converting that to modified accrual basis of accounting, and then to the full accrual basis of accounting, to actually have GAAP compliant financial statements. But other than that, that's a normal process as part of our, um, audit procedures, so there's no, no actual audit adjustments to the underlying books and records of the town. And again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so there was no modification needed to the opinion. The next section is, starts on page five, it's management's discussion and analysis. This section really is a good narrative overview of the town's year, and it talks about comparisons with the current year, the prior year, why things increased and decreased, if there was any large, um, debt issuances or capital projects, that would, would get explained in the, the management's discussion and analysis, or any large changes in pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, which are the big ticket items of the financial statements. The next section starts on page fifteen, those are your actual basic financial statements. So page sixteen and seventeen, that's your statement of net position, and then the few schedules after. Those are your full accrual financial statements. So that includes all long-term resources and long-term obligations. So that's where you'll see the, uh, post-employment benefit liability, the pension liability, your debt, your capital assets, all those long-term, not current financial resources and financial obligations. Your other post-employment benefit liability and the pension liability are the, the big, big scary liabilities on the financial statements. Um, your other post-employment benefit liability was five point two million, and pension was nine point eight million. I'm going to talk a little bit more about those as we progress through the financial statements, because there's some schedules in the back that are trend schedules, there are ten-year trend schedules and eight-year ten trend, trend schedules, which provide just more information when you look at it year over year. So we can talk about pension and other post-employment benefits as we go to those schedules. Debt, there was about two point five million in governmental debt and two point four million in enterprise, no new debt in 2024, so the only change in debt was the scheduled principal payments that were budgeted by the town. And for capital assets, there were two point two million in governmental acquisitions, which mainly related to roadways, uh, roadway improvements, chapter ninety, completed streets, and ARPA. Page twenty of the financial statements, those are your fund-based financial statements, or start the fund-based financial statements. The governmental fund-based financial statements have a few major funds, so you have your general fund, that's your general operations, your big budget, um, that, all that activity gets recorded in the general fund. Then there's the community preservation fund and the COVID nineteen fund, which is mainly ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funding. All the other funds get aggregated together in this non-major governmental funds column, because they just don't rise to the level of significance to be presented separately. So that's kind of how the, the fund-based financial statements work, and those are reported at modified accrual, so they don't include any long-term resources or long-term obligations, so they don't have the, the debt, um, fixed assets or capital assets, and pension and other post-employment benefits are not recorded at this level. So it gives kind of more of a current picture of the town. The COVID nineteen fund, that's your, that's your ARPA fund, um, or there's a couple of other smaller things in there, but mainly, mainly ARPA, that's like a significant element of that fund. Um, and this year, the town qualified for an alternative method on that federal funding. So there's been, you know, spent, you were allotted two point one million dollars, some of it was the municipal portion directly allocated to the town, and then some was part of the Essex County reallocation. Um, you've been spending that money since 2022, and you had to have obligated all of those funds by December thirty first of this year. And again, two years ago, there was the alternative method. Last year, there was no single audit, because it didn't rise to that level of federal funding spent. This year, an, an alternative method was performed again, and basically the alternative method, if the town spends more than seven hundred, under any circumstances, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding, you trigger a threshold to require a single audit in accordance with uniform guidance. What they did was, because ARPA was causing a lot of smaller towns to rise to that threshold, instead of having all new federal funding requirements for these smaller towns, and, you know, the resources may not be available to perform those audits for those towns, um, or for the town to acquire those audits, they said if your, if ARPA, like, was the reason why your town received or spent more than seven hundred and fifty, they allowed an alternative approach to the single audit. It's just kind of a truncated version of the single audit, and it just allowed the towns to, to get the resources to do that, that work, um, in a more efficient manner. So you did qualify for that, because if ARPA didn't exist, you would not have spent seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funding. And that is the other little report here, that is the examination over that alternative method approach. No issues were noted, so it's a pretty easy letter. That's that other letter there. And that's going away, it probably will be a very small amount of funding next year, so, or spending next year. The next round of financial statements relate to the proprietary funds, so that starts on page twenty-four and twenty-five. Those are, that's your water enterprise fund, your sewer enterprise fund, and the electric light department, so these are your business-type activities. These roll up into the, the front of the financial statements, so those first few schedules, these are on the full accrual basis of accounting. So you do have debt, capital assets, all of that information is included within these fund-based financial statements for the enterprise funds. So this information just breaks down what the business-type activities have on the, you know, the big schedules up top. And then the next schedule, starting on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight, those are your fiduciary funds. So the town has set up an other post-employment benefit trust to accumulate assets to offset the future, you know, health insurance costs for retirees to offset that liability, that big liability on your books and records. Um, so the town has established that, that trust, and that, there is the light department's trust included in that as well. There is a schedule in the notes that break out what the town and the light department have within the trust that roll up into this one column. So the town has eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in the trust, light department has five hundred and eight, and that's that one point four million dollars in total. The town contributed eighty-five thousand dollars this year, you've been contributing that on a pretty consistent basis. But again, we'll talk about that as we kind of get to the ten-year trend schedules, and you can see how the town has been contributing and funding that liability over time. The next round of the financial statements relate to the notes to the financial statements, starting on page twenty-nine. The notes just give expanded information and further detail on the amounts disclosed in the financial statements. There were no new notes, no significant changes to your notes, obviously all the numbers updated, but nothing that rose to the level of discussing, unless you would like to, um, talk about all the notes, but there's nothing new in here, in terms of notes. And then getting to those ten-year trend schedules that I was talking about, and just your required supplementary information. So on page seventy-five, that is your budget to actual, so that's how you can see the original budget that was voted for the general fund, the final budget, and how you performed as it relates to the budget. And, you know, your revenues came in two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars more than what was budgeted, you spent nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars less than what was budgeted, and you used five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of free cash last year for the budgeted. A lot of that was, you know, some of that was transferred to, to capital. The next couple of schedules here is your pension plan schedule, so starting on page seventy-six, you are part of the Essex Regional Retirement System, so you have a little less, a lot less, um, say in what they do with those investments over there. You are assessed a proportionate share of the liability that's calculated for the Essex Regional Retirement System. You are two point one four seven percent of the Essex Regional Retirement. Last year, went down a little bit from last year. That proportion is driven by payroll, so it's by your percentage of payroll as it relates to the other member units that are within the system. So your proportionate share was nine point eight million dollars this year, slight decrease, again, that mainly relates to your decrease, then your proportionate share, and just other elements that go into the, the Essex calculation as well. Your next schedule is on page eighty, that's your other post-employment benefit plan schedule, I know you kind of have to turn the page here, but that gives a ten-year, what's building out to be a ten-year trend schedule, since 2017, of what your total other post-employment benefit liability is, and what your fiduciary net position is. So in 2017, you started with ninety-eight thousand dollars in your trust, and over time, you've been contributing eighty-five thousand dollars on a consistent basis into the trust, and at the end of this year, you had eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars accumulated in the trust. And that buildup of that balance is a combination of contributing eighty-five thousand dollars each year and the investment earnings that you're, you've been earning, because that, those investment earnings are specific to the other post-employment benefit plan. So the total liability of about four point nine million, you know, five million, is offset by that eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars you have set aside, and that's how you get that four point one million dollar net OPEB liability. This schedule does not include the depart, the light department, they have their own schedule. And yeah, that's a, it's great that you're contributing on a, um, annual basis, so you're funded about seventeen point five nine percent, it's not required to be funded legally, so you're doing above and beyond what's required legally, but it's, it's a good idea to fund the, the trust fund, because, well, A, it brings your balance on the, you know, your liability balance down, and the rating agencies are starting to look to make sure that you have a plan to fund this very large liability. But other than that, those are the major elements of the financial statements. Like I said, very smooth audit, nothing overly significant this year, um, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to.
I, I just wanted, um, the, I've heard, you know, we've known about this post-employment liability thing forever, but I know that we pay an assessment for our retirees' benefits, correct? So who's managing the investment of the money that we're putting in the trust?
So I believe, do you have an investment, um, I know it's, it's in a specific investment, it's in Bartholomew, yeah. Bartholomew is, um, the investment advisor for the, the
Okay.
So Bartholomew determines, you know, with the town and with management what to invest in and?
Right, but we don't pay those benefits, we get assessed for those benefits.
So you, yeah, so there is a portion?
Essex County Retirement Fund, right?
Oh, that's, so, OPEB or pension, so pension is for Essex Regional, so yes, you are assessed in appropriation that you have to pay to the Essex Regional Retirement System. That is determined, that you get assessed an actual amount.
Yes.
You pay into that, so that's for pension, not for OPEB?
No, not for health insurance, is that what you're talking about? Health insurance, death benefits, things like that?
So for pension, you are part of a regional system, that's what you get assessed?
Yes, I understand that.
The other post-employment benefit, you pay your health insurance bill on an annual
Which includes our retirees?
Yes, exactly.
I got you, okay. So that's what the, um, that's the liability that they're projecting?
No, so that is a pay-as-you-go amount, so that's the amount that you're actually paying for the current, um, retirement.
Found my phone.
Benefits. That's what you're paying for the, the actual amount that you're paying annually, and then the actuary calculates what that liability is for all the retirees, as if everybody retired today, which?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know, right?
No, but the, so the life, the, we, the pension goes to Essex County.
Yep.
We pay the insurance for our active employees and our retired employees.
Yep.
And somebody has determined that we have a five million dollar deficit somewhere, somehow.
Yeah, your, your actuary is projecting out the retirement benefits of every single person in the part of the health insurance plan, and what their, their liabilities are until they die.
If I find this one, I'm going to throw it. It's maybe in here. Nope. Try again. Nope. He does have another parent. I hope he knows that. I think I'm going to hang up on him again, destroy this. Third hangup should do it. Sorry about that again.
Oh, no worries.
My son.
No worries, yeah, so that four point one, or that?
So that's, that's, that's some, um, yeah, so that's somebody projecting illness, death,
Exactly.
Um, how long people will live that are retiring from this town now, how long people will live, retire in ten years.
Yep.
And of course, kind of the worst-case scenario.
Exactly, so you're, you're, the town hires an actuarial specialist?
Right.
Who takes all the assumptions that you just said, how long are people going to live, um, what the, you know, death rate is?
Yep, yep.
The cost of health insurance projected. All of that information gets calculated by an actuarial specialist. What we do, because we're not actuaries, but what we do to make sure that that information is appropriate to have this liability recorded in your financial statements, is they use what's called census data file?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, or census data, and we test that, and we test the assumptions to make sure that they're reasonable.
Right. Right. Okay, but this is just a projection thing. And so, and then they expect by us putting something towards it, we're showing that we're at least aware of it.
In your funding.
Hoping that it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Okay, and that trust just sits there until if and when we determine that we need to use it. No one else can access.
So it's.
The town's money, right?
It is an irrevocable trust. You can only use it to pay for health insurance for retirees. You cannot take any money out of this. It's irrevocable. So when you set up the money and you're putting it in, you cannot remove. Unless you want to pay, the only thing you can do with it directly is pay the health insurance for retirees. So you can actually like pay the health insurance bill for retirees. But if you do that, your, your funding is gonna go down. So your, your funded percentage is gonna go down because you're gonna be paying money out of that trust. But you cannot vote to move that money or use that money for anything else. It is irrevocable.
Right, but we're doing it because we think someday we're going to need it?
Well, it's, it's to offset a projected liability. So yeah, to make sure that it, that you're projecting.
I got it now. Thank you. Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, it is accumulating assets that is just gonna most likely sit there. But you can, you can use it to pay for its intended purpose, yes, but no, nothing else.
So we can, we could at some point draw some on it to pay for retirees' insurance.
Yes, you could.
Health insurance.
But if you do that, your discount rate's probably gonna take a hit and it's probably gonna increase the liability. Your dis, the, the actuary will factor that in because.
Then you'll say we have more of a deficit.
We'll have more of a deficit. Because, yeah, as you draw down the funds in the trust, the amount that you can pay in the future is down. So they're saying that what you can do to cover the cost of those health insurance on a funding schedule will decrease. So you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it on the other side of it. Not that you can, it's up to management's decision, but it would, it would impact your funded level of your trust.
Okay, so they like the $85,000 a year. They're happy with that?
That, that's up, that's up to management's.
Okay.
What, what management wants to put into.
Well, yeah, because we're taking money that could go into our budgets.
Right, but rating agencies are looking at how, how funded you are. And if you have a plan, they wanna make sure you have a funding plan. But if you stop funding on a consistent basis, other assumptions would be factored in to.
Of course.
Defer that. So it could have a, a different impact to the pending liability than.
No, thank you. I, I've kind of, kind of understood it, but now I understand it more clearly. I appreciate that.
And we do have a plan in place as part of our financial policies to put aside $85,000 every fiscal year towards that effort.
Yep, and it's not, it's not a bad idea.
We're never gonna use it.
It's good to fund that liability.
So I noticed in their report, you said that, I know you consider all taxes 100% collectible, right? But other reports did include that listing of the uncollected, but this report did not.
Um, which in particular, so there was one, so more, normally because of the lien process, your real estate and your water sewer can be 100% collected. Was it an in-particular allowance? I know that in the past, there was that right off of the, the valley. Property, but that, that's a unique circumstance here.
We didn't write that off, I don't think, did we?
It was written down.
No.
Covered, yeah. Yep, exactly. Yep, exactly, yep.
We had it what?
Covered by the allowance. So there was an allowance booked for it to write down that balance.
So the allowance for abatements and exemptions, you can also include the properties that you'll, you know, we're probably never gonna get the money as an allowance. So that is also known as overlay that we always end up talking.
Well, yeah, I know, though that's, we're, we're in an endless, we're in an endless loop on this.
Right, so we always maintain that in our overlay to make it recovered.
Yeah.
Okay.
For that money that we're probably never gonna get.
So that allowance like nets out with your.
It makes us so we don't have a liability for it.
Okay.
And then other, other allowances are determined based on historical trends or anything to that nature. You know, the historical trends of what you think you're gonna be able to collect on those other liabilities.
Okay. Yeah, but pretty much we're up to snuff on our taxes and our collections, except for that one property.
Yeah, that one property is kind of a unique circumstance. So it's, it's not overly common that something like that happens, but it does. It does happen where, you know, getting that property is almost more of a liability than, you know, getting the taxes on it, yeah.
We get hurt either way.
Yes, yeah. So it's almost, you know, a lot of places don't want the property because it would be more of a liability to maintain or to fix or correct than what it's worth. And that's, that's what management determines as written off or written against to reduce the receivable.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is that it, Kathy?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Steve?
I'm gonna find that stupid phone.
Just one quick question. Since we were kind of talking about the post-employment benefits stuff. On page 81, can you just explain to me what the contribution deficiency is?
So the actuarially determined contribution is determined by the actuary. So that's not your, what you physically have contributed to the trust. So that's the difference between the actuarially determined contribution to fully fund and then what you actually contribute. So that's where that, that balance is.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
That's it? Ed?
Yeah, bring your attention to page 77.
Seven, eight, seven, pension, yep.
Two questions on that.
Yep.
Why is that ending in December and not in June?
So the retirement systems are all as of December 31st year ends. So they have a different year end. That's the measurement date. So the measurement date is December 31st, 2023, which is the latest report that Essex Regional has issued.
And the, the pension liability, the total pension liability, when are they supposed to be at, at 100%?
I believe Essex is, I can, I can double-check for sure, but maybe 2030? It's before 2040. They have a funding schedule. The exact date, I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I can absolutely get that for you. It's in Essex.
But that, that, that keeps moving it.
They do, they, yeah, it does.
They all do it.
We don't know what's gonna happen in 2040. They have to be legally fully funded by 2040. I don't know the exact date. It's 2030-something that they have a funding schedule for. Again, I don't want to speak exactly to it, but it is in their report. They, they must fund by 2040 and have a funding schedule. What happens in 2040 if the legislation pushes it out? Who knows? Nobody will know, but.
They're one of the, they're one of the best as far as percentage.
Funding, yep. Yeah, they do, they do a good job. And then the, the big question is, you know, once you become fully funded, at what point do you make the contribution? You know, bring that contribution down to not kind of make up those payments. But with a change in net investment income could easily sway that funding percentage. Because if the, if there was a bad year at Essex Regional and the investment earnings were down, that brings the funding percentage down. So at what, what point do you consider yourself fully funded? That's up to Essex Regional, but they have to be legally fully funded by 2040.
Yeah, but that legally funded by that particular date has moved a few.
It has, yes, it has, yep.
Chances are it'll be moved again.
Yep. Yeah, we haven't heard anything, but who knows?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very informative and I'm very happy to hear that everybody at Town Hall is still doing a phenomenal job.
They are.
So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions concerning?
Well, good, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, now we're gonna move on to discussion with the town moderator.
Well, thank you for seeing me again. I had made a proposal back in a previous meeting to form a town meeting study committee. I preempted that by asking individuals to see if they would serve on that study committee. We would be interested in studying what the charge is. The two main points of interest are electronic voting. And the other thing that might be interesting to the, the select board, which would be studied as well, is to look at the viability of possibly moving town meeting in the future on, to Saturdays. The, the real work of such a committee, because I, this will be my third study committee in 12 years. The real work is done by the individuals who said, yes, I'd like to be on this committee. We won't have more than two meetings this year. One, I'm planning and hoping for June 23rd. And then the other one would be at the end of the year. But the real work is done by individuals who will actually go on individual homework assignments. Like, for example, if it would be acceptable to the committee when we form, my homework assignment, I self, self-impose this on me, is to work on building a town-wide survey to ask a, a battery of questions for people to weigh in on electronic voting. And if the charge includes it, also on Saturday meetings. Steve Baker perhaps would be interested with his technology background doing what, what I call technology assessments. So Steve has expressed an interest in serving. Steve would also look into Saturday town meetings. Jen Peterson, our town clerk, has expressed interest in being on the study committee. She is going to a meeting, I think. Been to a meeting of town clerks and city clerks. And she has probably a cache of information about vendors and costs and contract requirements on those little clickers we call electronic voting. Just make sure that people understand that might be watching this meeting. Electronic voting does not mean you can vote at town meeting from your pajamas from home on Zoom. It is a device, handheld device, that will enable the voters to vote silently. And it's a great way to tabulate the votes quickly and to project them on a screen and so forth. Alyssa Lee is Director of the Council on Aging, has expressed interest in, in serving. And in my discussion with her, my initial recruitment, if you will, is that she would be interested in adding a, a bank of questions related to electronic voting and/or Saturday meeting on an already planned survey that she is planning for the Council of Aging anyway. So she's just gonna add some questions. And I've asked Ed Watson, I know he doesn't spend a lot of time on the internet, so I knocked on his door the other day, just as, in lieu of, you know, sending him an email, and asked him if he would provide us with, with, with assistance in understanding what the rules and the process would be for implementing any of this. So if we decide to go ahead with electronic voting, is that a town meeting decision? Is that a, a, a meeting of this board? Is it the decision of the town administrator? So I think Ed could really, that's an aptitude for Ed, I perceive. And he can help us figure out the rules. So everybody does their own assignments. And then we convene again at the end of the year. And then we'll convene a couple more times next year. My hope is with, within a year of June, we provide you with a written report. And that written report, as we spoke about last meeting, will be recommendations, if you'd like them. Or it could be simply a good set of pros and cons. Here's the good, good things. If you do the, if you do the electronic voting, here are the pros. If you do, and here are the cons. If you decide to go with Saturday meeting, here are the pros and here are the cons. And we're gonna research it as much as we can. I mean, pretty extensively and comprehensively. It's gonna be a chalk-full report, well-thought-out. I'm in no rush. I don't think anybody else is. But it's a question that I put to you is, give us an opportunity to study it. We've got some very qualified people willing to, to study it. And let us present you with some facts and figures and do's and don'ts and pros and cons. And as a community, we decide if we want to change town meeting to make it more appealing, more accessible, more convenient, more, more interesting as well, and more comfortable. I think this whole idea, for example, of electronic voting, where people may not feel comfortable raising their hands, voting on a matter that might not be agreeable to a neighbor, and all kinds of things like that. We'll bring that out in the report. And we're, we're not going to approach it, my vision is not to approach it with a, a preordained or preconceived notion that we have to have electronic voting or we have to have Saturday. I'm really an open book. And I'm actually quite concerned about making the wrong decision. So give us an opportunity to study it and bring it back to, for your consideration to move forward. And then based on how to actually implement it, we'll figure that out as well. And so what I'm looking for is a charge. And I made a commitment to you last meeting. I'll take whatever charge you provide, whether it's electronic voting only or Saturday meeting only or both.
Yes, I know that's where we left off and discussed it. And I asked everybody to think about it and come prepared with a idea of what changes, if any, to the charge that you had written down. So Ed, did you have anything that you would like to add or subtract?
No, I just got a question for Joe.
Sure.
You talk about you, you don't want to make the wrong decision.
Right.
Are you, are you referring to the wrong decision as far as going to electronic voting or going to Saturdays?
Oh, well, either one could be a wrong decision. If we decide, if we get excited about either one or both, and then we decide to implement and it doesn't work, people don't show up at the meeting or they complain or it's not right, that, that kind of thing. In other words, we're trying to build up town meeting, not diminish it. It's a little bit untested, really.
Anything else, Ed?
No. Steve?
No, I, no, I actually went back through the original charge and really didn't have any changes to make to it. I do like the idea of looking at both.
I think we survive best when we have our, our research done by committees because we know we don't have the time to do all this. I do have a slight concern with two members of the board on the committee because it gets very close to two members talking to the chairman and violation of open meeting law. So I get worried about that a little bit as a member of the board because when people file complaints, they file it against the board, which is against the town, which costs us money every time the complaint is filed. So I would put that out as a concern when, to put two board members on there, knowing that the quorum is three. And that once one talks to another, talks to the chairman or whatever, now you have a possible someone could, you know, say, I think there was a violation. And we've had these complaints from townspeople and other people before. So I take that seriously. The Sat, the meeting, the day of our town meeting is set by a bylaw. So you can, I think in the research of that, you should research how are other towns' meetings decided? Is it by bylaw? Is it another, is it charter? I mean, because we're, every town's a little different and we're all run a little differently. So I think you should definitely look at it because people have raised it up. But I would point out a couple of things. One, that where you may get more people that perhaps don't like to be out at night, you might lose a lot of people who have a lot of Saturday morning activities, families, children, from being able to participate. So we, we've gone through all this and we tried it. So I think it's great to have it researched again. It probably should be researched periodically just to see what's going on and what's working and not. But overall, I think one of the, the best things that can make a town meeting work is to have a good, strong moderator who keeps the meeting moving along. The way, the reason people walk out is when it's floundering and nobody knows what motion is on the floor and the discussion's been going on for over 20 minutes and nobody knows what they're even voting on anymore. So to me, that is more important than the daytime or whatever. But I think it's probably a good idea to research it and see how people are feeling on it. And I think surveys are fun. But I also think networking with groups of, parent groups through PTAs, Council on Aging through Council on Aging meetings. There's other groups, firefighters, there's groups you can network through and see what they would say more readily about going to these kind of meetings, either at night or on a, on a Saturday morning. I mean, for me, I could do either or, but I wasn't always that way, you know? So I, I, I feel the pain. I think that it'd be nice to make sure that everybody can feel included in the meeting. But I do feel the most important part of a meeting is to just keep it running, keep it on track, hopefully get everybody out, if it's at night, by nine o'clock. Set that as a goal. Why not?
Good goal.
I think this year, they did a phenomenal amount of work. Our town administrator did. I know you did some roundtables with her, but a lot of information was put out in advance of the meeting. People knew about the water treatment plant. People knew about the bylaws. There was a lot of information out there again and again and again. And I think that's what helps when you get to town meeting, when you've already. And I think that's what helps when you get to town meeting, when you've already heard about it over and over and over, you kind of know how you feel and what you're gonna vote, you know? So that, I know you felt there wasn't enough discussion at town meeting, but I feel that people knew about the big items, the MBTA, the water treatment plant, we knew about it, we've heard about it, we've seen the boards meet about it, we've heard debates about it, so we knew about it. So town meeting, yeah, there should be some debate, but you gotta be careful, because you lose your quorum, whether it's a Saturday morning or Monday night, it won't be any different. People will walk out. After two or three hours, they will walk out. So I just think that was good, but I think it's great to have a charge. I just feel that two members of the board is a little risky, and maybe you should get some citizens on there, somebody that's not connected with any boards, to get just that kind of point of view, because I know from being involved in the town, you're on the inner circle, we have this little tunnel vision. We don't always think of the things that the person who's not involved with all this back and forth thinks of, and we go, oh, I never thought of that. You know, so getting that opinion, I think, is important. So yeah, I'm prepared to vote the charge and let you study both of them, come back to us with pro-con and a recommendation. That'd be great.
I appreciate that, thank you. If we do receive a charge, then I'll check in with everybody. We're gonna have a meeting on June 23rd, and I'm gonna add a couple of things that you mentioned. You know, we are planning to organize, there'll be discussion and possible votes, we'll keep minutes, but we'll make sure that we have those rules in place, so that, you know, about not talking to each other in a roundabout way, absolutely.
But, tonight on the agenda, we're voting the charge.
Right.
We haven't voted and appointed anybody to the committee yet.
No, I understand that, and I need to check in with everybody, because then they have to come back here, and you have to appoint them.
Correct.
Yes, exactly.
Good, okay.
I get that part.
That's making sure.
And they have to swear in, too.
Yeah, okay.
I get it.
And if you wanted to get it out there for other people who might be interested.
Yeah, I think that's fine, yeah. I don't think the select board objects, it doesn't have to be five, we can go to six or seven, I can continue to recruit, which is not a bad idea.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I think given the nature of this, generally speaking, I think smaller boards work better, but in this case, I think maybe going to seven would be good. And I also think, to Kathy's point, there's a lot of things to look at around some of these, around both of these issues, right? And the Saturday town meeting especially, I mean, I think we need to not only look at it from a convenience point of view, but what other requirements do we have, like around the school district? Do we have to make sure that we're voting in conjunction with other cities and other towns and the district?
Oh, yeah.
Things like that. So there's a lot of things that go into that, and I think we need to make sure we're thinking about all of those when we dig into that issue.
That's why.
Actually, Steve made the, yeah, that actually, I forgot wholly about that, was my first point, that I called Rebecca and said, we just finally have reached an accord with the two other towns. We all meet on the same night when there's a school override issue, they don't like it if we meet on a different day. So I think the research is probably a good idea, but the actual transition, if that were to happen, would take more time.
Yeah, there's a lot of work that'll go into it.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree with that. No, thank you for that. And I think networking is a great idea. I mean, when we start formulating ideas, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for one of us or two of us to have open meetings with fire department, PTA, and so forth, and it's a good idea, so. Again, no rush, I want to do it right, I want to do it comprehensively, and I want to do it collaboratively with this board.
Sounds good. So you want to go ahead and make a motion for the?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the.
For your charge?
Oh, you got it here, perfect. All right. So I will make a motion that we approve the charge for the study committee as written in our last meeting. The Select Board issues a charge for the formation of the Town Meeting Study Committee for one year effective June 1st, 2025, for the purpose of initiating inquiry, developing operating rules, discover and present precedents, provide information and data, and enlist the supportive resources to produce a framework for transforming the fundamental process of town meeting in Groveland. The charge includes an appointment of seven voting members? Is that what we?
A minimum of five.
Including a voting chair. The charge directs the study committee to produce a written report and provide policy recommendations in the two areas of inquiry, electronic voting and Saturday town meeting.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
And do we have any further discussion? Seeing there's none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All right, well, thank you for your support.
Four, one absent.
Thank you for your support. Now, just let us know, let me know, I'm applying, so here, here's my application. How do the other members get in touch with you? Do you need an email that they want to serve on this board? Or do you want them to tell you tonight, or?
I want them all to email you, you sort it out, and then you can go to Rebecca, and she'll put it on our agenda.
Okay, I appreciate it. And then, very good, I'll do that, and I'll ask them to, you'll appoint them at next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, can we have an exploratory meeting on June 23rd?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
When's our next meeting?
June 23rd.
What?
June 23rd.
You can't meet until you get sworn in.
Yeah, okay.
And so you can't meet till we vote and appoint you, and then you have to get sworn in.
So you're gonna appoint us on June 23rd, those of us that express an interest in serving?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you. We haven't set a meeting, I'm just trying to understand.
Right, yeah, you have to be like, you know, do that.
All right, that's fine.
Well, you did say, Joe, you weren't in a hurry.
I'm in no rush. Well, you know, just a point of order.
Sounds like you are, though.
I asked to come here sometime in the middle of June, a public comment, and I ended up on the agenda, so I'm thrilled, I think there's an interest in this, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, very much so.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. So you guys will send me an email? No rush.
Now, we do have a vote on the next one, which is a memorandum of agreement.
Yes.
For the police.
What was that?
The vote for the memorandum on the agreement for the Groveland Police Department.
Yes, as I've noted in my town administrator time, we have been in negotiations with the police union for the last few months. We've gone back and forth a couple of times, so what you'll find in your packet is what the union representative and the union council, as well as myself and the police chief, have agreed for fiscal year 2026. In order to move forward, we do need a vote of the select board. Additionally, you'll note as part of that CBA agreement, there is one clause that we had talked about prior, at a previous meeting, concerning the creation of a superiors union. And so if you look at the document as part of such, we will need to move forward and accept whether or not we would like to create that superiors union within the town of Groveland. And in talking with the members, it appears that the agreement itself would very much mimic all of the agreed upon terms of the patrolman union. The only difference is taking them out, because these two individuals, specifically being the lieutenant and the administrative sergeant, perform internal investigations on these members, and to make sure that there is a chain of command and hierarchy, and that doesn't cause any conflicts when these types of investigations are going on, to remove them from the union and put them in their own union is a common practice for this type of structure.
So does anybody have any questions about that for Rebecca? Kathy?
No, are we creating this, within this document of memorandum of understanding?
So there'll be two votes, there'll be one vote to accept the memorandum of agreement, and to sign that document, and the second vote will be to allow for the creation of a superior union for the two members, as noted.
Do you have any questions, Steve?
I do not.
How about you, Ed?
I don't have any questions.
You all sit over there, Kathy?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
All right, so we'll entertain the, you want it in two separate motions, or can we do it in a double motion?
Two separate motions would be preferred, please.
You got it. You want to go ahead and make a motion there, Kathy?
Yes, making sure, it looks good. Okay, so this is a memorandum of agreement, then, for the patrolmen's unit?
Correct.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the memorandum of agreement for the Groveland Police Patrolmen's Association on this date, as dated.
This would be three-year contract from July 1st, 2025 through 30th of 2028.
Exactly, from fiscal 2026 through 2028 fiscal years. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
As I seen on, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Four in favor, one absent. And the other motion?
Well, we don't have anything else in front of us on the packet.
So it would be, the second motion would be in regards to the creation of the superiors union. If you look as part of the agreement, you'll see in Section 9, the recognition and bargaining unit, and it says, Section 1, the town recognizes MASCOP Local 420 as an exclusive bargaining representative for all full-time, regular patrol officers and sergeants of the police department for the town of Groveland, excluding the chief of the department, police lieutenant, police captains, part-time employees, office or clerical employees, auxiliaries, reserve officers, special officers, and all other employees of the town. So as part of that, we just want to, again, solidify that the select board is accepting the creation of an additional bargaining unit, going to be known as the superiors bargaining unit, and that will include two members of the police department, and they will be able to bargain separately from the patrolmen.
But the agreement that we just voted, does that cover them for the next three years, or are they gonna come back and bargain for more money?
So they're gonna come back and bargain for this fiscal, the upcoming fiscal year. However, with the conversations that we've had, their agreement will mirror this agreement here, and they will be covered by the same representatives of the MASCOP Local 420. That was part of the understanding in talking with them, that if they wanted to move forward with the separation, that the town would not be willing to make any other changes in terms of the agreement, unless specifically noted in terms of the language within the agreement, or the titles of the individuals. So it's all essentially been negotiated as part of this, but again, it's up to the select board to accept and to allow them to create the additional bargaining unit, which is why I'm asking for two separate votes, because they are two separate actions. But we couldn't necessarily create a bargaining unit if they did not want to, or the union, patrolmen's union, did not allow those individuals to create their own bargaining unit as well.
So you're asking for a vote to create the bargaining unit, not to agree to an agreement that hasn't been written yet?
Exactly, 100%. And once they do have that agreement, that will come back before the board. And you're right, they could ask for additional monies or additional things that we were not, we had not discussed, but if that's the case, we have the ability to say that we do not want to move forward, and I think that we have strong grounds that there would really be no case for them to argue that we are bargaining in bad faith, because we are in fact allowing them to do this as part of the agreement with the patrolmen's union, because of the fact that they're uncomfortable with these particular individuals being as part of their group.
And who is included in that new bargaining unit?
Lieutenant, police captains.
It's the, yes, correct.
Lieutenants and police captains.
Thank you.
You all sit over there with the motion?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the rest of that sentence excluding, that excludes people from the current patrolmen's bargaining unit, they would not be included in the superior bargaining unit. The part-time employees, clerical employees, auxiliary, reserve, none of those, they're excluded from the patrolmen's bargaining unit, they would be excluded from the superior bargaining unit.
Correct. There is no superior unit as it exists right now, so they would be without representation.
Okay, but if we vote, we're gonna vote to allow a superior bargaining unit, and we're gonna restrict it to the police lieutenant and police captains?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to allow for a superior bargaining unit, based on our review of this current agreement, and it would include the police lieutenant and police captains.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Without any, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Four in favor, one absent. And with that, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is Billis Way.
So for Billis Way, at your last meeting, we did vote to accept the roadway and taking by eminent domain, however, we did not sign the document that would provide for the permanent easement over Billis Way, so we need to, so we accepted the laying out of the way, but we did not accept the taking of the way, so this document is to accept the taking, as well as to sign the documents in regards to parcel A and parcel B, which remained under ownership of the developer. So he had given those two parcels to the town, so we need to sign the deed acceptance. So we'll have the vote to authorize the board to acquire permanent easement over Billis Way, and a vote to accept the deed for parcel A and parcel B.
So three votes?
Just two.
So I'll make a motion that we vote to take?
So for Billis Way, you would just read the agenda to say, vote to authorize the select board to acquire permanent easement over Billis Way by eminent domain for public way purposes, as approved under Article 3 of the April 28, 2025 annual town meeting.
That's my motion.
So motioned. Is there a second?
Bet you're not quick here.
I'll second.
And do we have any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent?
Yes.
And the second vote would be the vote to authorize the select board to accept the deed for parcel A and parcel B for Billis Way, as authorized under Article 3 of the April 28, 2025 annual town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one absent. All right, with that done, we're gonna move on to the assessment at Assessors Map 24, Parcel 041.
So that's in your packet, I did have a communication, that's for the property that we know as 452 Main Street, which is the sewer pump station right next to the trail, next to the solar field. We have been in communications with National Grid, they made a presentation to the select board to put in a pressure relief valve, and as part of that project, they agreed to create six parking spaces for the community trail on that property. They provided a grant that we would need to sign, and looking closer at the grant, we realized there is no easement, so they would not be allowed to put the infrastructure on our property. So we went through the process of getting an article together that would allow the select board to grant an easement to National Grid for the construction of this infrastructure. They had submitted a building permit through the building commissioner, and they also filed for an NOI, and in the process, they want to move forward now with a street opening permit, but we do not have the final documents for the easement, so they just provided the easement plan the day that we were putting together the agenda, they said they would have the easement together, I said if they didn't have it by close of business, we were gonna table this item, they did not have it, so I would suggest that we table this until we get the official easement language and have it reviewed by town council.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
All right, having a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Four in favor, one absent. All right, green trips.
Green tips, but we.
Just a question on the agenda, did we skip an item?
Yeah, we did.
We skipped the town administrator?
Val.
Performance?
Performance assessment.
Evaluation.
Yep.
Do you have those?
They're in the packet, everyone got it, right? I sent it on in. Yes, it's in the packet. So I'm just going down to refresh my memory, it should be no surprise to anyone that our town administrator earned high marks in the performance evaluation, she's done an outstanding job again, and goes above and beyond every day. Every day, as far as I can tell. So, you know, each board member was asked to complete the evaluation form in four categories, relationship with the select board, town administration, budget and finance, and community relations. And within each category, there were several subcategories, and a rating that ranged from 1 to 5, where 1 is unsatisfactory, 2, it needs improvement, 3 satisfactory, 4 excellent, 5 distinguished. The appendix includes everybody's completed form. I noted that the town administrator's evidence is given to us on a bimonthly basis. She gives us succinct, intricate reports every, twice a month, in conjunction with our meetings, so we're kept up to date on key and critical projects and information that's coming through the town. So overall ratings, relationship with the board, 4.9. Town administration, 4.6. Budget and finance, 4.9, community relations, 4.3, overall, 4.75, which puts her between excellent and distinguished, which I think is accurate and good. And I thank everybody that participated and did their report, including former member Mark Parento, because it is helpful when all members participate in this process. But I would suggest, at a future agenda, that maybe a subcommittee, or maybe just one member of the board working with Rebecca, or somebody else, it could be very small. I think we should look at revising, this was the form that was given to us by the consultant, and it's gotten us through, but I feel like it's getting a little bit stale. And we can make it more relevant by looking around, see what everyone else is using, if that's okay, just a future thought.
Yes, I believe we were speaking of also making it electronic.
Yeah, that'd be good, too.
The goals would be posted on the next one moving forward, which I think is a fundamental idea.
So if everybody's had a chance to review, I would like a motion and a second to accept the evaluation summary report, and the overall evaluation of excellent to distinguished.
So I'll definitely make the motion to accept the review as read by select member Gastrinellis.
Second.
Since we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Four in favor, one absent.
Okay, so we did that. And now, as far as the green tips and green ideas, we continue to work with a consultant, and we continue to see other towns that are doing things that we're not doing yet, but we're moving on it. As I've said in other times, there's little things you can start to do right now that can really help you out in your home, like putting a small collection bin, or bucket, or box even, an upstairs bathroom, where you're throwing out shampoo bottles, and tissue boxes, and toilet paper rolls, that usually don't make it all the way down to the recycling, because your largest bin is going to be your recycling bin. So people are going to probably start doing more recycling, because they're going to have a bigger bin to put stuff in. We also are working on coming out with what you can and can't put in the recycling bin, but what you might be able to do with that stuff, other than throw it in your trash. So we're working on that, we're working on other green tips. I know myself personally, having gone to the market and bought some aluminum foil, I was very shocked at how expensive aluminum foil is. And I'm moving towards parchment paper whenever possible, to bake on instead of that, you know, because it's got to be at least one and a half times the cost of what it used to be. So recycling not only saves the town money, but as you get good at it, and you become a better consumer, it could help your home budget as well. There's just a lot of things that we're throwing out in the trash that maybe we don't need to. So if anybody out there has other green tips that they want us to read off, things they're doing at their home to reduce trash, and help with that whole statewide initiative, please send them on in to us, we'll read them out. Appreciate that. That's all.
And I think for a green tip for myself, I think if you're making a purchase for convenience around the house, it's something you could look at and think if there's a better way to help purchase something that may reduce trash, even though it's going to take you a little bit more work around your house. With that, we have three one-day liquor licenses. Would anybody like to make motion on those?
Sure.
Let's go.
Want to take all at once?
I don't see why we can't.
I'll make a motion that we approve one-day liquor license for June 20th, 2025, from 5:30 to 9:30. One for June 21st, 2025, 3 to 10. And one for June 15th, 2025, 1 to 5, at FZ Park.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion?
Just clarification, two of them are for the same people, is that correct?
Correct, but they're different dates.
Yes, I knew that.
The one-day liquor license, so you have.
Right, they're having a lot of parties.
Good weekend.
Okay. All ready to vote.
All right, so I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one absent. Appointments and resignations. So I'll make a motion to appoint Melissa Baker of Sunset Circle as a community member to the Bagnell Elementary School Council, effective June 9th, 2025.
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
I'll abstain from that vote.
Three in favor, one abstention, one absence. I'll make a motion to appoint Melissa Baker of Sunset Circle to the Board of Assessors, effective June 9th, 2025, through May 4th, 2025. Have a second?
Second.
Can I make a correction on that date? Should it be May 4th, 2026?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Last month, last, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So we have a second?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I'll abstain.
Three in favor, one abstention, one absence. I'll make a motion to appoint George W. Honor Jr. of Seven Star Road to the Groveland Council of Agent, effective June 9th, 2025, through June 30th, 2027.
I'll second that, and Mr. Honor is here.
I thought it might be.
Would you like to come up and say anything?
Yeah.
I don't blame you.
I'm shy.
And you don't have to.
I'll second the motion, but I'll say to you, Mr. Honor George, that I really liked your letter, and we appreciate that you are helping us out. Thank you.
I'm grateful to do it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very, very much, we all appreciate it.
Thanks for stepping up.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, so all in favor? Four in favor, one absent. I'll make a motion for appoint Jennifer Peterson, Town Clerk, as a burial agent, effective June 9th, 2025.
Till when, forever?
Forever. You can never resign from that position.
Well, is it a forever thing?
I can answer a little bit of what I understand. So in some towns, the board of health is the burial agent, but in a lot of towns, it's the town clerk. Burial agent is the first recipient of the death notice.
Right.
So we knew it needed to be appointed, we weren't sure when. The last time it was appointed was for Beth, and it was two years ago. I didn't know if it was supposed to be an annual appointment, but Annie seems to recall that it was decided that it didn't need to be done on an annual basis, as long as it was done.
One time.
Just a one time.
Okay.
So I mean, I guess if you had to, you know, pick an end date, you would maybe say the end of my town clerk term.
Yeah, as long as you're elected town clerk, then I imagine that you will be there, because we've appointed you there.
Right. Right, and you'd be listed on the town website and everything as the burial agent, yep.
That's perfect.
Perfect.
It'll change when, if that ever changes.
So you make the motion, we seconded it already, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So any further discussion? All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of David Petriello from the Cultural Council, effective May 31st, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? Having none, call for the vote, all in favor? Four in favor, one absent. And I'll accept the resignation, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Alexander Woods from the Finance Board, effective May 21st, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, I just want to thank David and Alex both for their service on the different boards that they served on over the past few years.
Yeah. All right, I call for the vote, all in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one absent. We have no minutes, no old or unfinished business from anybody?
Yes, I do have one thing, and it's probably maybe a future agenda. You, last meeting, when Becky was here, she had asked for our policies member to be on the agenda. And I was thinking about the time that you and I spent together drafting the first documents that then kind of shot down. And we had to take a lot out and make it fairly generic. But I was thinking about in terms of, you know, code of conduct, and, you know, how we address each other, and how we present our different points of view, how we share the time, take turns, and all that. I think some of the things we looked at originally had some of that in it. And if the board were willing, I could just pull out that old file that we put together and see what's in there that we didn't, that we don't currently have as a policy. What do you think?
Well, I certainly think we can put that up for discussion at our next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting, anybody? Nothing of great urgency? Town administrators' time.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, so I just have a couple of updates. As you noted, on last Monday, I sent you out an email. Like we had discussed, I tried to cut down the length of time for the memos and reports by the town administrator. So on that Monday, I had some updates for you to keep you informed of things that I'm working on throughout the week, and issues that come up, so that you can be informed if residents or anyone has any questions. So today, just a couple of updates, the 2025 pavement management program is continuing. Because of the upcoming rain, things have been shifted. But we are expected to put the final top coat in paving over at the Salem and School Street intersection, as well as Murray and Harvard. So we are keeping the public informed through social media to make sure that they are aware when there's going to be any disruptions to travel. The Washington Street Playground, just to alert the board that we had a resident call in regards to the lack of the mulch over at the playground. This opened up a very interesting conversation with the Programs and Projects Manager, Arthur Marcos, in regards to how we annually review our parks and make sure that they're in compliance, and that they're being up-kept the way that they are, being kept the way that we need them to. And that we're also complying with all the safety measures that have been implemented. So we did replenish the mulch in that particular area, and we have started to put together an annual playground inspection policy that we will have with the public grounds and cemetery supervisor, that will be overseen by Arthur in his new position as the superintendent, starting in July. Along those same lines, we had talked about standard operating procedures for the department. And as we have created the structure with the superintendent and the three divisions, being the public grounds and cemetery, the building and facilities, as well as the roadway division, we are working to make sure that we have all of those procedures down and written down. So how many parks do we inspect now, when do we inspect them? You know, how many sidewalks do we plow, when do we plow them, what are the plow routes? You know, how many exit signs do we have in the building? When do we get our fire extinguishers inspected? So, and get that all kind of written down into a plan that will obviously be updated continuously, as it's an evolving document. So it was really a very great conversation to have with Arthur, I'm really excited about it. These are things that we've been talking about with other departments, but I just wanted to highlight his forward thinking on that, and also highlight that we're finally going to have a document that will help transition when we do have turnover, which is something that we haven't necessarily had in the past. The Valley Screw Building, we did have an update. As you know, we had a site walk with MASTEP to figure out whether or not there was any asbestos and/or hazardous building materials that they could find on the exterior of the building. If these results were positive, they would be able to apply for a demolition of the building through the EPA, that would have some type of monetary compensation to take down the building. Unfortunately, the report found that there is no asbestos and/or hazardous building materials on the exterior of the building. The letter clearly does state that that does not mean that it's not on the interior of the building. And for us, this is a very disheartening thing to hear, obviously, because the building is a public safety threat, no matter which way you look at it, whether you find the asbestos on the outside or you don't. And so we're just going to continue to find ways that we can communicate with MASTEP and EPA, and our state delegation, and our local partners, to try and figure out what we can do next. We have an internal meeting scheduled in the next few weeks to kind of talk that out. Then we want to go back to MASTEP and the EPA, and just kind of say, listen, you know, this is what we're thinking, what can we do? So while not the information that we were hoping for, we are going to push forward. For project requests and residential concerns, we did have a complaint about tree removal over at the Washington Street Playground. We actually worked very closely with our general manager over at the Electric Light Department, Kevin Snow, and also utilizing the support of Groveland GML Utility Services, LLC. And they had taken down a couple of limbs, and they also found that, you know, given the condition of the tree, it might be best to just remove it altogether. So they're looking at actual removal of the tree in the next few weeks. There were no field use property use, there were special permits issued. Important upcoming dates, as we discussed in the past, the community field date was rescheduled for June 14th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Pines. There's a planning board meeting on July 17th, at 7:00 p.m., and there's a Conservation Commission meeting on July 18th. For grants, we're working hard to close out all of the grants for the end of the fiscal year, so that we can make sure that free cash doesn't take any impact to any outstanding funds. And then we also had an interesting meeting with our consultants with the Economic Development Committee for the request for expression of interest for 150 Center Street. We unfortunately did not receive any expressions of interest. So that was not something that we were expecting. We didn't receive any initial request for the first round, so we had extended it from the May 19th deadline to June 2nd. Again, we re-advertised, we reached out to as many people as we possibly could, and again, there was no support. So we had a discussion with the consultant, we had a discussion with the committee itself, and we're thinking that there's a couple of factors that come into play, some of them being the, you know, current economic condition, interest rates, in addition to the lack of zoning. So currently, the site is zoned for industrial, it's not zoned for anything that we've been talking about. So it would be extremely risky for a developer to move forward with any type of proposal, not knowing whether or not the zoning is going to support such. So we were hoping that we could get some feedback, so that we could guide that process, because we would understand exactly what somebody would be willing to put there. But unfortunately, we just didn't get that feedback. So what we're going to do is, as I mentioned in my email, we're going to apply for a grant through the Community One Stop, which we did on June 4th, for zoning rewrite for this particular parcel, and mixed-use overlay of some sort, that we could put in other locations as well. So if we were successful in the funding, we would then take a closer look at that particular area and others, to figure out exactly what we would want. That also would give the residents an opportunity to have a more public dialogue about what they would like to see for the site, because it is something that would require town meeting approval, as we know from the MBTA zoning. So it is something that we would have conversations with all of relative departments, and what would be required in terms of their regulatory requirements, but as well as the actual public, which we think will be better in the long run anyway, because it will give us an opportunity to get the feedback and buy-in of the community, and if they are even interested in moving in this direction yet again. So if we are successful with that grant, that work will hopefully begin in the October timeframe. It will not be completed for this year. But if we are getting closer to the target date, we would be able to apply for additional funding for an RFP, which was our, you know, assumed next step. But this does give us an opportunity to stay on course, it's just a different. a different course that will get us to the same end result. And then for Proke Yeormin, we had the plotter purchase for Town Hall, that was part of the brick grant that Sam Jocelyn had received in the Building Commissioner's Office, and then we had signed a contract with Catalyst for the fiscal year 26 valuation, so that's over in the Assessors Department. Catalyst was Patriot formerly. And then there was no technical review conferences, and I have my meetings and events and seminars listed out, and would be happy to elaborate if you have any questions.
Thank you.
I do. Page two, about 150 Center Street, next to the last paragraph we have. It is determined that several factors may have contributed to lack of responses, including the current interest rate environment, broader economic uncertainty, lack of familiarity. I think maybe you could, you could add not lack of, but too familiar with Groveland, that they know they're really kind of anti-business, and they put them through the hurdles, and maybe that's part of the problem.
It could very well be.
That's something that they've been, ever since before, way before I got on a board of selectmen, the different boards have not been conducive to businesses, or maybe they are too familiar.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Ed, because at the planning board meeting next, we're going to be looking at some of the zoning in the business districts to help, hopefully, work to make it more business friendly. Now, the, you talked about the overlay to 150 Center Street being utilized in some of the other areas, so that's something that we could overlay in other business districts?
Potentially, yes, depending on what direction we want to go.
Nice. That might be able to give a good starting point. So I do encourage anybody that's interested to go to the planning board meeting, just because it will be discussed, and the whole goal is to remove some of it from the zoning, so they don't have to go through zoning, to make it as right, to make it a lot easier process, and hopefully attract some businesses to town. So, including anybody from the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board.
Well, it, it helps, it helps the town financially, because most of the businesses, they don't really use much in favor of town services, and I, I've used the scenario many times, you don't see the, the school bus stop up in front of Chesterton, you don't see the school bus stop up in the industrial park on Salem Street, and, oh, it's, it's a win-win for the town, we can get businesses to move in here, help support the residents' taxes.
Absolutely. All right, with that, we're going to move on to Select Board time and reports.
I thought we could ask questions.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I'm interested in the Valley Screw Building and the finding that there's no imminent danger, since we know that the fence was cut, and that the door was opened, and that I'm sure, I'm pretty sure probably wasn't adults in there drinking beer. So somebody, it could be residents', children in this town, that are in a building that could have potential hazards in it, with a building that is going to collapse, and we know about this. Are we able to send a letter to the owner to tell him that he must check that property for security, fix the fence, secure the doors, and do it on a regular basis? He left it here, but I don't see why we should stand by when we know, you know, teenagers will be teenagers, they don't make the smartest decisions all the time, but we're the adults, and we know they're not making a smart decision at that building, we're all aware of this, and we're not doing anything about it, and that concerns me.
A hundred percent. So after the site visit that we had in April, the Building Commissioner did send over a sign to them and alert them about the breaks in the fence. That being said, the property in the back, where the breaks in the fence also were, are property of the Archdiocese.
Well, send to them too.
So we sent over correspondence to them as well, alerting them that there were breaks in the fence as well. But I completely agree with you, the issue with the Valley Screw, unfortunately, for this particular program, was the, you know, the identification of asbestos and hazardous building material. I think Mast EP and the EPA realize that this is a hazard, we're just hoping that they'll do more to try and find a solution. So a hundred percent agree with you, and we have been in, in touch with the building owner as well.
But it looks like, when I look down at that site now, it looks like the, the building old by the Archdiocese has become abandoned as well, it's overgrown, the, it looks like they're not going into that anymore, so no one is checking these properties. No one knows what's going on in those buildings or not in those buildings, and we know what that means for young people in this town. That's an adventure, but it was, one that could end really badly, and we're aware of this, we're aware of two abandoned buildings that no one is checking on. So I'd like to know, you know, what can we do about this? Can we legally do anything? Can we issue fines if they don't start taking care of these properties and making sure they're secure? If they're not going to use these buildings, at least make sure that these buildings are secure and that people can't get inside of them.
So essentially, that's what the Building Commissioner's letter said to the building owner at Valley Screw. So he, he does need to be compliant, that's why you see the temporary fence over there, he did need to barricade that off when the building started to, you know, cave in on itself, so he has provided the official documentation that is required under the court of law as well, so that if we do decide to take next steps, it has all been documented, and he must adhere, otherwise enforcement can be taken. The Archdiocese property is a little bit more tricky. We are monitoring them to, to some extent, I mean, the police does a great job in terms of, you know, trying to highlight as much suspicious activity as, as possible, but they are private property, so it does become a little bit more challenging to impose or to enter private property without cause, so unless there is the activity and the activities being highlighted, as long as he fences it up and, and blocks it, and the door's locked that day, if somebody picks the lock at night, it, it's not really something that, you know, it, it's easy as just.
Well, he has to fix the lock then, right?
Exactly, and every time we, we notice it, we do send correspondence to alert him that he is responsible for making sure that that site is secure.
Okay.
It's just not always foolproof either, that's all.
Okay, so maybe people in the neighborhood would be interested in getting involved and keeping an eye on things and raising this to a more visible level, because it, it just seems to me that the, the bureaucracy finds another bureaucratic excuse to do nothing every single time, and I know you've worked terribly hard on this, you put yourself way out there, but it doesn't, it seems that, you know, there's always another bureaucratic excuse to do nothing, and now we do know that once, you know, a few folks have found their way into this building as a neat old hangout, I'm sure if they're young and, and at home still, the parents are totally unaware that this building might even exist in our town, you know, they might think there's, their children out on the, riding the dirt, you know, on the, in the Center Street property, you know, no, nothing wrong there, right? Not knowing that this is happening. So I think raising more awareness of it is important before something happens, I mean, we always seem to wait, let's just wait till something happens, then, you know, then we'll talk about it. I don't think we should do that.
I agree, and I can talk to the police chief and see if there's anything else that we can do in regards to security, and I'll reach out to the Building Commissioner as well, and we can talk about any other additional enforcement actions that we can take against the property owner, in addition to reminding the Archdiocese that they have an obligation on their property as well.
Right, okay, thank you, and it's okay for neighborhoods to get involved, correct?
Of course.
Okay, good.
To report what they see, not to trespass and take action.
A hundred percent, yes, yes, thank you for the clarification.
To get involved.
Yes, see, witness and report.
Or complain to your state representatives.
Yeah, that too. Absolutely. Any other questions for Rebecca? All right, with that, we'll move on to Select Board time and reports. Kathy?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Ed?
Negative, also.
Steve?
Just one quick thing, as the weather gets nicer and school wraps up for the year, it seems like nearby communities have seen an uptick in pedestrian accidents, so I just want to remind residents to pay attention to their surroundings, whether you're driving or walking, and try to keep everyone safe.
Yes, very important, especially after what happened in Newburyport, you know, that was big in the paper, and we don't want to have any of that happen around here, so don't run out from between any parked cars.
Well, there is one, the, I know that around Washington Park, folks tend to use that parking lot during the winter months a little bit, but I've noticed the baseball must be getting bigger, because now the cars are overflowing and parking along the road, so we're ending up with kids getting out into that road, so maybe we could put a sign finally that says there's a park on that road, and warn people to slow down.
Slow down and watch for kids not paying attention.
On their bikes with their baseball bats.
Not that that's going to happen.
Yeah.
But at least on the kids' aspect, I never paid attention. We had some correspondence from the Lawrence Hydro, Hydroelectric Project, so those were the pitches I saw that I thought were the pitches they sent us for the dam. And then Lawrence General Hospital, Holy Family Hospital Updates. That's an package for us to read.
Yeah.
And do we have anything else?
No.
So our next regularly scheduled meeting for the Select Board is Monday, June 23rd, at 6:30, and I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, wait a minute, I don't think I'm here for that, am I? Hang on, don't put it on the agenda.
You can pull out your noisy phone and we can check. The one that I reminded you to silence before the meeting, and you got all offended.
It's, it's been hiding on me all day, it does that, you know, these phones, they have a mind of their own. Um, let me just see, I might, as I asked for something on the agenda, I'll ask you to postpone it, I think that's when I'm away, I'm so sorry. Yes, I'm away, I'm so sorry.
No worries.
So whatever I asked for, for the 23rd, what did I ask you to put on the agenda? Oh, the policies, can we push that off?
Yeah, be a great idea.
Thank you so much.
Like I said last time, you'll have to remind me after.
I will, no, I can do that.
I appreciate that.
Of course.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:50 p.m.
Second.
Motion is second, and call for a vote, all in favor? Four in favor, one absent, and we are adjourned.